5:30 Travis, if you want to hit the go button, we might as well get started.
Event is begun.
Are we live?
We are live.
Well, all right. Welcome, everybody, those of you who are out there in video land to the June 2, 2020 eWeb board meeting. We have a relatively light packet and schedule to work through, but some meaty topics nonetheless. It's 5:30. My name is Steve Mattel. I'm this year's board president. And we thank you, those of you who are out there participating remotely to this meeting. We'll jump right into the first item, and that's the agenda check. All the commissioners have been sent the agenda beforehand. It's posted on our website as well. So anybody who wants to see it, who doesn't have it, can go to the eWeb website and download a copy. I will ask for any changes or concerns or alterations to the agenda of any of the commissioners. I can see all, actually, I can't see John Brown. I can see the others. Do any of you have any changes to recommend? John, I can't see you. Would you just say yes or no?
No, I don't have anything. I'm here.
Well, all right then. We will move into items from board members and our general manager. I suppose we will start, if you think of your nor our normal seating arrangement there in the eWeb boardroom, we will start with the person who is furthest away from the river. Who would that be? I think that's Commissioner Carlson. Actually, I think that's, I think I made a mistake. I think that's Commissioner Schlossberg. Sorry, I just spit. That's what happens when you step away from the board meeting room for three months. You can't remember who sits where. Commissioner Schlossberg, you are up first.
It's like that game where you look at the things on the plate and then you put a, take one away and you have to guess what's taken away. Anyway, I don't have much. I just want to thank the eWeb staff for keeping things going during these very turbulent and uncertain times. Also, I attended the Lain Resiliency Collaboration Meeting that happened last Friday. I don't know if there was anyone else from eWeb there, but it was good to attend that, especially because they called us out for an example of the types of collaboration that they're looking for with our 4G collaboration in water distribution sites. And then just lastly, really quick, I want to congratulate Matt McCray and John Borowski on winning their seats for the upcoming term as commissioners. That's it.
Thank you. Next up, I think now would be Commissioner Carlson.
I don't have anything to add. Well, I guess I will say thank you to staff, too. I really appreciated the information that was sent out about kind of our response during the incredibly challenging times as well. So thank you, everyone, for just hanging in there and battening down the hatches and making sure that we can just keep running and doing the business that we do. So, thank you.
Dick, I think you're next.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any relatively current events, but I just did want to touch on one thing that came up at the last meeting, and that was that we had requested some background information on the various components of the eWeb compensation plan, particularly as it related to our discussion last time of the general manager's compensation. And there were no issues there. It was just a request to receive from staffs and documentation of the various components that we administer through the course of time so that we and future boards would have access to that. And I just wanted to let you know, as is referenced in General Manager Lawson's report, that there has been a draft prepared by Lena, our Chief Human Resources Officer, that speaks to that. And I find it in good shape. I did have a few clarification questions. But I believe that's something that should be ready for distribution quite soon, if not in the next couple of days. I think President Matal has seen that as well. So that was really the only thing I had, and it was a follow-up item. Thank you.
All right. I think I'm next. I'll just, I just want to echo some of the sentiments echoed by others or stated by others. The congratulations to the couple of folks who won at least the primary. I suppose vigorous writing could upset their chances in November. However, it's extremely unlikely. So yeah, we are really looking forward to the replacements to Dick and myself on the board. I think they're going to be great. So I'm looking forward to seeing them. I hope they're both out there perhaps now listening to the meeting. And also to echo sentiments about thanks to eWeb staff, those who are in the field and at home, and perhaps back at the office now to some extent, we just want to appreciate the, you know, all the good work that you do. My lights and the water have been running just fine the entire time, and I do think about you all and the work that you have to do to make that happen during strange times. So much appreciated. Couple other quick things. I did not have very much eWeb business per se this past month since we last met. But I do have a little coming up. I have a phone call scheduled with my counterpart, John DeWinter over at SUB. It was actually supposed to be today. We had to push it to Thursday. That's something we do, just as president to president, and others have done it as well. We delayed it a little bit, just as we were re, kind of getting accustomed to the kind of the COVID culture. But anyways, now we have a phone call. We'll do that this Thursday. And hopefully, we will also get back on the schedule with the mayor, city manager, and one or two of the councilors. That's a meeting that was scheduled quarterly that Mindy was responsible for getting up and running last fall. We had one meeting in the winter, and then things have been delayed for understandable reasons, but it's important to get those back up and running. So there is one scheduled fairly soon. And then I guess I have to report that I just had an invitation that is going to be very difficult, actually impossible, for me to pass up. That's a trip with some family and friends down the middle fork of the Salmon River, which I believe is going to prevent me from attending next the July board meeting. So I will make sure to be fully prepared with the materials and so that anything I can vote by proxy ahead of time, if there's, that's necessary, I will. And Commissioner Schlossberg, I'll of course ask you to run the meeting in my absence. That's it from me, I believe, at this point. John Brown, you're next.
All right. Thank you. I also share the congratulations to John and Matt for being able to join us. And hopefully, they'll be get brought into the queue with the information and the background or things soon, because Matt's in, he was unopposed, and I think John got the majority. So like Steve said, I think that it's pretty given that they're going to be our next two commissioners. And thank you, Frank, for reminding us of what our people in the field go through every day, that incident with the two meter readers. As you know, like I said, I have a little bit of knowledge about that, but it just goes to show you that even locally, that we have people that are subject to hatred and things. And it's just, it's sad to know that that happens here, even in our community. But I'm glad that it turned out the way it did, and nobody was hurt. The other thing is Frank and I are continuing our dialogues with Springfield Utility Board. And I think the documents, I don't know, Frank, if you want to elaborate on that, if the documents on the easements and transactions didn't Glenn would have gone any further than the last time I saw. But and lastly, I'd just like to mention that hopefully sometime in the future, I didn't say it on our agendas, we're going to talk about the headquarters building now that it's, we know that Phillips isn't going to be there. And that's going to be a big difference in the financial impact with the rent going away in a while. So hopefully, we can think about that and about what we're going to do, because if we're not going to be in there, that building will be totally empty or almost empty within a year. So that's all I have.
Frank, you're up, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. President Matal, commissioners, good evening. Good evening to staff that are listening in and also those out in the general public who are listening in. I wanted to extend my congratulations to Commissioner Carlson as well, who while running unopposed in the primary along with John Borowski and Matt McCray, they will both, all three of those will be solely listed on the ballot in November. We actually refer to Mr. Borowski and Mr. McCray as presumptive commissioner elects at this point. And so we will start working with them this summer and this fall to orient them to a lot of the issues that we face and offer them to our facilities and to meet with staff as appropriately. So we're looking forward to that. I think the last commissioner to go through that was Commissioner Schlossberg just a couple of years ago. So we are looking forward to working with John and Matt in the future, as well as congratulations to Commissioner Carlson. I also wanted to just thank the finance staff for a lot of the work they've been doing the last few months around our bond issuances. We did receive our pricing and was a favorable benefit for refinancing some of our bonds, roughly about $30 million in total for the refinancing piece of it, with a present value savings of over roughly about $4.5 million. So I'd really like to thank all the work that goes into the bonding efforts that they put forth and thank them. And also congratulate the Water Utility. They received notice of a national award, a national safety award from the American Waterworks Association for utilities of 500 employees or less. And so while we, there is no national conference this year to receive the award. We will receive the award on their behalf. And so thanks to those in the Water Utility who put forth and reinforce our values towards safety every day. Other than that, Commissioner Matal, that was it. I did provide most other comments to the commissioners in my general manager's report. So I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Well, thank you. And I, I can't believe I forgot to wish congratulations to Commissioner Carlson, Sonia. Congratulations. I think, given the fact that you were running unopposed, it was sort of a foregone conclusion. I think I almost forgot that you were involved in the race as well. But of course, there you are, and you ran. And I'm really happy that you're running or that you're going to be there for an additional four years, because you've been a really great presence these last four. So that continuity is really important. So thank you for the service to date and for the plans to continue on. All right. Well, with that, and somebody's got to say something about Frank's haircut. Frank, that, I am, that's, that's quite a shame. Did you do that yourself or what happened there?
Yeah, that's, that's actually, you know, my hair was getting so long and I was sequestered for a while. And I guess it's the sign of impatience. I don't know, maybe overreaction. But it actually feels great. It's just a little bit white. I need to get out and get a little bit of sun. Other than that, it feels great. There's, my beard is growing faster than my hair, which is probably a bad sign. So yeah, I'm ready for summer.
All right then. Let's jump into the next item. That's number three, and that's public input. So Ann Carr, our board secretary, informed me just a little bit ago that nobody had submitted public testimony ahead of time. And that really is the only way that it can be read into the record at this point in time. We don't have any live options the way we would at a normal board meeting. If folks are out there watching and participating and want to submit testimony, of course, you always can via the commissioner webpage. That will be dispersed to the five of us, as well as to Frank and Ann. And so we all, of course, read our email just as very frequently. And so that's a way to reach out to commissioners as well. But as far as I understand, there is no public input this evening. So we will move straight into item number four. That's the first of our action items, and that's the approval of the Consent Calendar A. And in this case, that's, let's see. Frank, well, this is the first time we're using consent calendars A and B. So maybe for the benefit of us all, we could just get clear about which items are on Consent Calendar A today and which ones are on B. I'm going to pull that up right now. All right. Well, I'm looking at it right now. The Consent Calendar A is the minutes from last month's meeting. That's two executive sessions in the regular section. And the first two contracts, the Eugene Sand Construction Contract for 100, it's $135,000 up for grabs in the Quick Creek QPS, which is 252,000. All of those, or anybody wants to pull any of those items? Hearing none, seeing none, I will ask for a vote. All of those in favor of passing Consent Calendar Item, Consent Calendar A, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 We got to work on that a little bit, but that sounded like unanimity. All right. We will now move on to Consent Calendar B. That's the balance of the contracts for five, six, seven, and a resolution number 2020. Does anybody wish to pull any of those items for consideration or discussion? I thought for sure one of them was getting pulled, but it looks like that's not going to happen. All right. In that case, we will, I will, I just realized I've missed a little process. Do I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar B?
To move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Well, we, now I will move to approve the, well, that is, I guess we've had, we've had, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing Consent Calendar B, please raise your hand and say aye. Let's try and get this in unison this time. Hands up on three. One, two, three. Aye. That was not so much good. All right. That also passes unanimously. Frank or Ann, for purposes of process, do I need to go back and redo Consent Calendar A? Sitting here at my desk in the comfort of my own home, I forgot some important process or potentially important process.
Commissioner, President Matal, I would recommend that you just go ahead and call for a motion and a second and do that officially, just so that's part of the record. I would also just want to point out to some of those who are listening in, especially the general public, to that commissioners oftentimes submit questions to staff prior to the meeting. And so I just want people to understand that we, we go through a little bit of back and forth answering questions prior to getting to the public session. And so the approval is based not only on, on the agenda, on the consent calendar as presented. We also link the question and answer interactions from the commissioners on our website as well. So if there are questions, then those get posted as well. But I would, would recommend that you just go back through the process on Agenda on Consent Calendar A.
All right. Well, let's do that. My apologies, everybody. The, I don't know what threw me off. Something did tonight. All right. Let's go back and do Consent Calendar A. Is there a motion to approve Consent Calendar A? We have a motion from Commissioner Carlson. I need a second as well.
Second.
I have one from Dick Helgason. Okay, now is there, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of passing Consent Calendar A, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 I don't think, giving up on that one. We're moving on. All right. Now I believe we have passed that one officially. Let me just go back to.
President Matal, can I just ask, for purposes of the, any audience, and also for all of us who may have forgotten, going forward, what is the distinction now between Consent Calendars A and B? And from a process standpoint, are those just separated by criteria? Or do they have different background information? Or what's?
I believe it's the, it's the value of the, of the contract at stake. But Frank, will you elaborate and give us the precise information?
Yeah, typically Consent Calendar A is going to be routine items that have gone through a routine process. So either an invitation to bid where we had multiple bidders, meeting minutes, or if we had requests for proposals where we achieved at least our minimum of three bidders, for example, or used a state contract. Consent Calendar B is typically items that either don't meet that criteria, are directly negotiated, for example. And you should expect to see a little bit more background information on Consent Calendar B. But one is typically routine items. That's A. And then really non-routine contracts would be Consent Calendar B.
Thank you.
All righty. We will move on to general business items. The first up is the COVID-19 financial position and customer lifelines. There, this item's got 45 minutes, and it's being headed up by Frank, Deborah, and Julie, I believe.
Yes, President Matal, commissioners, good evening. If Travis, you could pull up the presentation, that would be helpful at this time. Thank you. So commissioners, I'd like to offer that you really think of this presentation and discussion as a precursor to our July meeting, where we will get into a lot more detail around assumptions for the long-term financial plan and our budget assumptions. And we'll go through more details on the capital improvement plan at that point. But in that context, we'd like to talk about some of the impacts that we're predicting for the economy relative to the pandemic, as well as some other items that have impacted our finances over the last few months. Next slide, Travis, please. This is really the essence of what you'll hear this evening. This is the bottom line upfront, as a former commissioner used to refer to it as the bluff. I do want to emphasize that we are taking a very deliberate and intentional approach to how we're looking at the economic impacts going forward. We do think that there's going to be some severe impacts that we need to plan for. We are, and it does look like we are going to be capable of remaining on our rate trajectory that we had presented to the board last year through 2023, in particular. And then the outer years, there are some decisions that we'd like to work with the board on as to potential long-term impacts relative to long-term investments. There is a gap that depending on the scenario that we use and then the modeling that we use, we will have a financial gap mostly between now and the end of 2023. So three and a half year gap ranging anywhere from about $16 million to $31 million over that timeframe. And, and so we do see some financial challenges ahead, but we are planning for that. And we are looking at both financial tools, direct cost savings, and some other decisions that can help us get there. In the midst of recovery, it's not just about eWeb, it is about customers. And so we'll discuss a little bit later in the presentation, some of the enhanced programs that we're planning to offer customers. It's mostly around terms and conditions that we can offer them so that they can recover as well and we can participate proactively and appropriately in the community. We do see that reserves will remain within board policy throughout the 10-year view. We do look at, we look at our long-term financial plan beyond 10 years, but typically work with the board and publish it, looking out 10 years. We do see reserves remaining within board policy. There is one caveat to that, and that, that cash flows from year to year can have some impact on those metrics. And so depending on issues around customer payments and other things, we'll keep a very close eye on cash flow in particular. We're in a good cash position now, but we also know that any actions that we take relative to cash today will have board policy and reserves and other types of impacts later on. And then we'll talk a little bit about our capital strategies relative to investments. We recognize that we use assets to deliver electricity and water, and in some cases telecom to our customers. And so we need to continue to make those long-term investments for the overall and long-term good of the community. Next slide, please, Travis. Just as a reminder, I don't expect you to read the fine print here, but just as a reminder that this is part of our overall approach to the COVID-19 pandemic. Recovery includes both an eWeb assessment as well as helping the community. Initially, we were in response mode. We're now internal to the organization, working on reintegrating our workforce to our facilities. That's a lot like the state. That's in phases. And so we're in the initial phase of that. Tonight, we'll talk more about the economic recovery. And then also a little bit around replenishment, depending on how long and how deep the economic conditions persist, we'll have to look at what it takes to make sure we're replenishing our financial resources appropriately. Next slide. The principles we're applying as we, we go through this is that we do need to, we are making the assumption that there will be economic fallout from the pandemic. We see it in unemployment numbers. We see it in certain business segments not being able to operate even partially at this point. And so we, we do need to plan around that, and we want to be active and intentional with that. We also recognize that we have essential services 24/7, 365, and we need to consistently deliver those in accordance with the values that this board has already reinforced around safety and reliability and affordability and being part of the community. We also are approaching this with the mindset that this is not going to affect our strategic goals. Those remain intact, as well as our 2020 goals. And we want to continue to pursue those for the act, for the long-term benefit of our community. But finally, we do realize that we're going to have to take some cost actions, in particular around expenses and potentially some impact on capital going forward. And we want to be strategic with that. We want to be proportional and equitable as we move forward there. Next slide, please. When we model this, this is really our way of taking a look at how wide and how deep the economic fallout can be. We're looking at three scenarios. The first one is what we think the forecasted economy will be for eWeb. This isn't necessarily, eWeb is kind of a secondary market reactor to this. But we're looking at representing this as revenue decline. This is consumption-related decline that we'll capture as retail revenue. So there's a year and a half of moderate decline, 5% or so in the forecasted. And you can read the others here on the screen. Further depression is a little deeper and longer. And then an early recovery would be maybe a year or year and a half, followed by a pretty quick recovery. And, and these are pretty consistent with what we're hearing from other utilities and also what we're hearing from some economists that we're working with. We did a lot of interaction with, with bond counsel and others when we were going through the recent bonding exercises. And so we're, we're going to start with the forecasted economy and look a little bit further at what it would look like if the depression went a little longer or deeper, and make sure that we're able to handle those two conditions most of all. Next slide, please. As we go through this, there's a few things that we're targeting as far as our goals and recovery goals. One is we do want to make sure that we're in a position that we can help customers through this. We'll talk about what that looks like in a few more slides. That is mostly around extended payment terms and conditions, as opposed to putting a lot of money into direct aid. We think there's actually other opportunities through enhanced light heap and others, where there's an opportunity to, for the state or the federal government to step up a little further there. We are looking to maintain our present rate trajectory. In the midst of a, an economic challenge, rates become important to customers. They're always important to customers, but in particular, when they're already economically challenged and the utility burden or energy burden, however you want to look at that on the electric side, it becomes important to them. We are going to use all of our financial tools that we can prudently, looking at potentially using reserves. But as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that we're in a good cash position as we go through this. And, and then we'll look at some, some capital decisions around potential goals and limits going forward. Maintaining rates in the near term, there can be some pressure in the outer five or six years. And we want to get a little feel from the board as to whether you want to maintain the same rate structure that we did last year, or whether there's some opportunity to push that in the outer years if necessary. Not that we are all intending to push any problems down the road. We want to continue to invest. Next slide. This is a representation of what we presented last October as far as rate trajectory. I'll call it, or revenue requirement trajectory, to be specific. If you look at what that represents, on the electric side, the compounded value for that whole 10 years is about 18.5%, and on the water utility, it's about 23.4%. And so when we talk about the long-term, you know, maintaining in the green there, you'll see we really want to maintain that rate trajectory, which is what we projected last fall before we entered. last fall before we entered this particular pandemic crisis and economic challenge. And then the blue is where we might have some flexibility, and we want to gauge the board's willingness to maybe add a few percentage points here and there if we need to for other investments. Next slide. There's lots of ways that we look at cost opportunities. This is probably pretty small on most people's screen, and so I won't go through all the details. We are looking at lots of different opportunities. Some of them are very easy and natural, such as travel. Travel has been basically curtailed in most cases. We have training reductions, a lot of that is going online. There's other programs, such as what we invest in different trade organizations or memberships. There's a lot of things that we're looking at from a direct expense perspective. We are also looking at how we approach non-labor escalation. Again, talking to and looking at a lot of economic reports, it's very segment-specific. So for example, meat prices have skyrocketed, as have home prices are still going up, and yet you're getting a pretty sharp decline in oil prices. And so what we've been able to gauge out of that is the general goods and services that we procure is probably more along the lines of a half a percent to 1%. Historically, we've used 2%. And so we think that in an economic downturn, it's probably a fair assumption to make that you won't see the escalation that you would under a normal economy. And then we're also looking at a number of different options relative to the workforce. The challenges that we face here is that we have two different, we have the MAPT employee set, and then we have a pretty large percentage of our employees who are represented by the IBW union and operate under a collective bargaining agreement. And so any changes relative to things like benefits or pay, in the case of the union, has to be gone through a very specific process. And so, and we want to be equitable within our entire employee base. And so we are looking at a number of different options relative to direct labor savings. That can be anything, and we are looking at anything from furloughs to potential layoffs to cutting back of benefits. We are also, because a lot of our salary escalation, and we're dealing with this over three and a half years, as I mentioned earlier, salary escalation tends to be driven by CPI. So it's probably our, being competitive within our ranges, looking at CPI, that's going to, historically, we've looked at a 3.1% escalation, and it's probably not appropriate to use that number. We would like to actually control that number going forward over the next few years. Next slide, please. The actual result, when you look at these so far, is under the forecasted economy, we're about $14.5 million worth of savings identified over the next three and a half years, and about double that, 27.5% or so. If the economy gets further depressed, these are measures that we've identified that we can take. When you look just roughly at how that breaks down, about a quarter of it, the blue segment is direct benefits and labor savings as of today. Those would be things like furloughs or cost controls relative to today's labor force benefits and other things. About the orange segment there is future wages and benefits. This is also, part of this is leaving positions open, so not filling open FTE and using a certain degree of attrition during that time. So that's included in the orange as well. So it's not just wages, but it's also actual number of people and projected FTE. Then finally, just direct cost savings, which is the gray portion of the pie chart there. And when you think about our actual budget and the fact that about a quarter is labor, this is probably appropriate, given about quarter of that savings comes directly from labor, which would be pretty well represented in the grand scheme of our total budget. Next slide, please. When it comes to capital, we also have to look at this slightly differently. What we did was, we went in and looked at the expense, direct cost control measures, and then we said, okay, well, what does that do to capital? The capital numbers that you see there for electric and water, kind of wanted to give a little bit of flexibility to the planners, Rod Price and the capital planners, to be able to work within some ranges. I would call these kind of the outer limits of the ranges, and we wanted to test to see what it did to our future rate trajectory. As you can see, given the numbers there, the near-term compounded rate stays the same. That was one of our goals. So 2020 now through 2023, the rates stay on the same trajectory as we had before, which was actually a very good rate trajectory. And then the long-term compounded rate is higher in both cases. And so in the case of the electric, it's about 5% increase over the outer six years, actually. And then water, it goes from 23 to roughly 25 to 29%. And so now this is, it does give us opportunity, and Rod Price will talk a little bit later about turning the dials up and down in the capital plan. And so if, all we did right now was take the measures that we've identified, those tend to be expense-related savings, and then use this capital plan, then you would get results that drive your rates up a little further than we would have today. So it is something that we feel like we can manage. It's something that we want to talk further about with the board as we go forward as to the appetite to look at rates in the outer years versus the near-term years. Next slide, please. Our lifelines that we're looking to offer customers, many of these you know already, we've extended and our customer care amounts. Actually, the June, since this is June 2nd, the June opening was yesterday. Out of, we had 770 allocated spots for this month. As of today, those are partly unfilled, so only roughly 570 or so, last number, or 541, I think, was the last number that I heard have actually applied for E-Web customer care this month. So there's actually some openings this month. We did suspend our shut-off program. That is something that does need to return at some point. We are looking as a backstop. We obviously do not like to shut customers off, it's the absolute last resort. We do expect to resurrect that part of our program in the early part of July would be the plan at this point. We want to do that with the caveat that we can communicate with customers early and often, which we've actually already started around the programs available and partial payments. And we want to offer them extended payment plans and other things, which are highlighted here on the right side of the screen, offerings for both all customer classes, and then also some small business opportunity, terms and conditions for payment plans or deferred payments or reduced consumption payments. There's a number of different options that we're looking at there. This is mostly around offering customers the ability to, over a number of months, pay off their existing balances, as well as develop payment plans that they can live with, and because really our intent here is to keep our customers our customers and being able to continue our products and services. Unfortunately, with a small number of customers, the backstop of having shut-offs and disconnects for non-payment is the backstop that's needed to create the action that we need. So that is going to kind of go hand in hand here. Next slide, please. So just concluding the presentation, this is really a reiteration of what we started with. We do think that there's economic fallout that is coming, the signs are obvious. As a utility and part of the community, we want to facilitate our customers to have an opportunity to continue to provide them products and services. We also know that there's a pretty large gap that we need to fill if indeed revenue decreases to the extent we think it could. We also have some other things. This isn't just COVID-related, Willamette Industries closing, for example. Commissioner Brown earlier mentioned the loss of revenue at the headquarters building, so we have some decisions to make around that, as well as some other decisions. So we do think it's manageable. We are really trying to prioritize our rate trajectory and understand there's a sensitivity to that, especially over the next few years as our economy recovers. So there's a special sensitivity to that, but we also know that there's going to be some decisions around the long term, because we think it's important to continue to invest in the infrastructure and the people necessary to continue our operations. So with that, I think I will open it up for, next slide, please, which I think just says, we would welcome your comments. Remember, this is really context for when we bring you things over the next month or two relative to financial plans. The other thing I didn't mention was, one of the options for financing some of our customer programs is we have a small business growth and retention fund that this board created that has a couple million dollars in it roughly, that has basically gone unused, and there is an opportunity to redirect that through board action to something that would be more along the lines of providing extended terms and conditions or other direct assistance to customers. And so I'd be curious to get, we can talk more, that'll take a board action, so we can talk about that more in the future. But the intent here was to give you a little background, so when we start talking about budget and long-term planning assumptions, you'll have some indication as to what our thinking around the economy is and what we're planning for. President Mattel, I'll turn it back to you.
All righty, well, thank you, Frank. I'm just looking at the clock that I started at the beginning of this piece. We have about 22 minutes remaining. I'll open up a queue. It looks like Sonya wants to jump in first. So just, yeah, raise your hand. I can't see John Brown, unfortunately, but.
He's raising his hand, Commissioner.
All right, well, anyways, I've got Sonya, Dick, and then John, anyway, so far in the queue. Go ahead, Sonya.
Okay, on the slide where it has the, it says capital investment, financial capacity. I'm curious, the rates, the compounded rate impact that's listed on there and the long-term compounded rate impact, that means that what was, what was in the upper box was what was forecasted in October, and without any other changes to reduction in spending, will be, in order to keep that same level essentially, we would be at 23.5% on the electric side and 25 to 29% on the water side. Is that what that means? I just want to confirm.
Just slightly different. The, you are correct in the sense that the plan last October or the numbers on the top, the result on the bottom, the part in pink there, red there, that represents what the capital investments in the upper left-hand corner would do to that rate trajectory. If we wanted to get back to the original rate trajectory, we would have to cut money out of the capital plan that's listed above. So it's possible, the capital plan listed above is roughly on par to a little higher than what was presented in October. And so that is something that we kind of want to understand from the board's perspective as to, yeah, if we did these numbers, we absorbed the issue with the economy, is it okay to be, in the case of electric here, 5% in aggregate, so this is compounded, higher in the outer six years? Is that, is that something okay, given the right investments? Or is the board's appetite really to stick with the, with the same trajectory that we proposed in October?
Okay, so another follow-up to that, then. The assumptions then for the revenue requirement on it, on the other slide where it has the labor savings and such, so the assumptions for that longer-term financial plan are based off of the assumption, the labor assumptions that are on the long-term financial plan, identify potential savings? Are those the assumptions that are used, or are those part of the, those are part of the mitigation so that we wouldn't hit that 23.5%?
No, those assumptions are already in there, Commissioner Carlson. Because right now, we're looking at, we are going to have to absorb a gap of anywhere from $16 to $31 million, depending on whether it's forecasted or further depressed. That, we are doing that by making the changes listed here on this page and a few others. This is not the total list. The capital is part of this discussion in the sense that these are already baked in to the numbers that we're projecting, at least at this point. And so, and these do not fully absorb, or fully fill the gap of $16 to $31 million. They get us part of the way there. They get us probably 80% to 90% of the way there.
Sonya, in the interest of time, I'm going to move it around to the other folks, and I'll do my best to keep track of time and remind folks that we're trying to keep it to three minutes each, and should be enough time to get two full rounds in if we are efficient. Dick, you're next.
Okay, thank you. I too just want to ask some clarifying questions to make sure I'm understanding what you're showing us in these slides. So basically, the savings that you're projecting as being needed to maintain our rate trajectory are driven by the reductions in revenue associated with your economic assumptions? Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. They don't quite get us to the level, the full gap that is developed in the loss of revenue. They get us part of the way there. They get us a substantial, substantially there, but not all the way.
And then again, on the capital side, the capital side that we're looking at, the escalation in contribution to future rate trajectory, that's a function of a reduction in revenues available to fund principally rate-funded capital? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, now, what we've modeled so far is a combination of planned financing, so things like bonding, we had already had some plans out in the future for that. And in some cases, depending on the economic conditions, we may go a little, tap into that a little bit heavier. But then the rate-funded portion of that, the remaining rate-funded portion is what's used to drive those compounded revenue requirements going forward, which is what Commissioner Carlson was asking about earlier.
Okay, so lastly, you're pointing to the levers that you see yourself as having available to treat any gaps, as you call them. It would be helpful to me in future portrayals, maybe as an initial point, to just see a picture of the financial forecast with the changes in economic assumptions, which would expose the extent to which, both on the operating and capital side, we're showing revenue requirements in excess of what the former rate trajectory would have required. So, you know, you're kind of skipping beyond that and saying, we have the ability to treat it, and here are the rough amounts that need to be treated over the various time spans. For me, it would be helpful to just see the raw numbers without, in terms of just rate percentage adjustments as compared to our original baseline. And I'll just leave that as a comment, because I'm trying to interpolate a little bit in what you're showing us here, although I think I appreciate, you know, the points you're making. making. Thanks.
Sorry, go ahead, President Mattel.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to add that our intent, when we come back and work through our normal financial processes this summer, is we will present both the assumptions as well as the 10-year view of the long-term financial plans, more like you're used to seeing. Those we will have to establish, okay, here's the baseline that we started from, and then here's the projection now that we are incorporating and seeing both revenue reductions as well as realizing cost reductions as well. So I think there's, the intent is that we will bring back something that's a little bit more of a trend and not just sort of a broad brush, which is what I've painted this evening.
I think the comment I was making, and I appreciate your points and look forward to future discussions, the point I was making is I'd like to see a view of the untreated version as compared to our baseline and then the treated version. Because that sort of helps me see where the gaps are.
I can certainly follow up with the board on that, understanding that it's a pretty interesting process when you look at all of a sudden, and these are slightly different for the different utilities. I will point out that there's maybe a little bit more immunity on the water side than the electric side to economic conditions. But of that 16 million, 13 of it is electric and 3 million is water. And so if you, if you take out 13, or the total of $16 million in the next few years of revenue, then you have to make up for that somewhere. And so we can present, we can bring back or follow up with the board what that looks like. Untreated.
I'm going to move us, hey, all, in the interest of just managing time, which I'm trying to get accustomed to, I'll hold this up when you have a minute left and then again when you have 30 seconds left, just to try and help manage the time. John Brown, you're in the queue next.
Thank you. I'm going to try and get all three of my questions in in a quick time. Frank, did, in your assumptions, did you roll back construction costs, number one? Number two is the rate increase that we have on that chart for water, AWS, when we go 5% and 6% over those years? And number three, how does Lieberg factor into this, knowing that we're going to have costs that aren't in the budget? We're going to have lost revenue, and we're going to have costs either to fix it or to decommission it? And so those are my three questions. Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner Brown. So first of all, we've used a lower escalator for construction. That is something that managing project by project, we'll see a pretty wide range on that. Sometimes you see in tight economic conditions, you can see certain segments increase. But we, across the board, some of that would roll into capital as well. Most of the savings that were identified so far and the escalators are reduced under slowed-down economy, which includes construction. The second part of your question, remember, your second question. What was your second question? I remember the third one.
Some AWS thing.
Oh, oh, yes. It did include AWS in the middle 2020s. That's part of the reason you saw the 6.5% and 5.5% rate increases in that timeframe. And that would be a project that could be pulled in or pushed out depending on the economic conditions. So yes, that was included in there. And then Lieberg, we have modeled extended outages presently for Lieberg out through 2021. We have not modeled the costs associated yet with what a repair would look like to the canal. That is something that we will have to roll into the capital plan if needed, and that's part of what we'll have the work session on in a couple of weeks to talk about what some of those costs look like. But we have modeled the loss in revenue, at least for the near few years.
Thank you.
John, you done?
Yeah, I am. I said, thank you.
Fair enough. All right, Mindy, you're up.
So I just have a couple of questions about the customer impacts for people who are having more difficulty paying their bills right now. So I think when I'm looking at on the revenue requirement plans, those are things that we've already decided right through 2023. And looking at the economic forecast, what I think I see is that we're projecting that it's going to still be pretty iffy, either ending 2022 or 2024. And just when we look at our rate trajectory, it just looks like between 2022 and 2024 are the years where we have the biggest rate increases. So I guess I'm just wondering out loud about that. And also, like, what does a 4.2% increase on the electric side, like, what does that equate to in dollars for the average family?
Yeah, Commissioner, we can certainly give you dollars and what this means. I think the average annual electric bill, for example, was right around $750 a year. And so if you were to add 4%, you could boil that down per month. Obviously, as we go through the year, the electric utility and the water utility are on different cycles. The electric utility peaking in the winter, the water utility peaking in the summer. And so there's actually different rate impacts there. When you look at the trajectory of some of those rate increases, there's a couple, every other year on the electric side is Bonneville Power Administration. And so we've modeled those in, and one of those four and a half's included that as well as some financing for Carmen Smith, some additional financing for Carmen Smith. And so some of those weigh into that. When you start to get into the middle 2020s on the water side, you start to get into, and these are, the two utilities use financing differently. The water utility does a lot more bonding and financing that way. When you start to get into the middle 2020s, you get into the alternative water source. And then throughout the 2020s in our, in our base-level reservoir projects, for example. So Rod will talk a little bit more about moving things around from a capital perspective. The other thing that we continue to look at, and because rates are important, when you look back through history, we have had rate forecasts, things that look kind of like this, and yet we've been able to mitigate as we've gone along. This does also not include both certain things like Commissioner Brown mentioned, Lieberg, but also the selling of real estate assets, for example, are not included in here. There's some other things that we have not included in the potential upside. And so I think that when you look at this, the message that you should get is that a lot of this is manageable. The water utility, for example, is the lowest-priced, other than Medford, which is more of a wholesaler, the lowest-priced water utility in the Northwest, which is probably one of the lowest in the country. So I think managing rates is an important part of this. We'll get you more specifics in the financial planning that we bring back next month as far as specific dollars and sense impacts on rates.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, I'll jump into the queue as well, and we will not have time for a second round unless folks are interested in extending the session, which I'll be happy to take a quick poll about in a few minutes. And I'll measure myself for time, just like I did you all. So, yeah, I have a few things to ask and suggest, Frank. So last time we were in a budget crunch, I think it was actually my first year, perhaps the second, and there was a big effort to basically defer a bunch of capital work. The number I have in my head was some $85 million worth of capital work got deferred just to relieve some pressure on the immediate term. So I'm just wondering to the extent to which you all either have or plan to evaluate those options and still, you know, maintain safety, reliability, those basic parameters.
Yeah, I think it's a good question, Commissioner Mattel. Actually, Rod Price will talk about that more in detail in the next presentation as well as in July, although you'll be on the Salmon River, so I'm not sure that you'll be in the right mindset. I think it is important, you know, one of the things that we recognize is that we use capital assets to deliver our products and services, and we don't want to push problems down the road. At the same time, we do understand the ebbs and flows and the sensitivity that there is to rates and the ability to finance, for example. Those are all things that we want to weigh in, weigh into it. In some parts of our future, we've had maybe inflated capital plans. I think the ones that we have now definitely are trying to look specifically at the trade-offs between running to fail, for example, the operational trade-offs, O and M and maintenance versus capital. I think those are all really important things. We will look at all of that as part of our financial planning over the next couple of months and actually well into the fall as we get into the specifics for the 2021 budget. It's a great point when you think about $250 million over 10 years on the water side and $350 million on the electric side. There's a lot of opportunity to maybe shift things around a little bit. At the same time, we know that there's parts of our system that are aging. And so we want to do it intentionally and intelligently and not just say, oh, here's a number. But we do know that rates and finances matter, especially when we're looking at tough economic conditions. But we also don't want to leverage the future of our products and services in our community by taking a too drastic slice of that.
Understood. I think the board should probably have some, you know, some say in that. So I'm hoping that we see options and, you know, for delaying some capital, but also to understand what the potential risks are and impacts to our reliability and safety programs. And I think in the end, it's probably, should be, we should certainly weigh in on that because there is a lot of opportunity there. But I also agree with you that we have made our capital plans much more realistic, much less inflated or robust as the term used to be. So there's probably a far less opportunity there. But nonetheless, whatever there is, I hope we turn it over. You kind of mentioned my second point, and that was, you know, the extent to which we can move, you know, things from bucket number two into bucket number three and basically fund them with bonds, with bond money and spread that cost out over a 30-year period, take advantage of low-cost bonds right now. The third thing I wanted to say, and these are just comments now, is it would be helpful to get some information about impacts in the local economy. Most of the information you shared, and I understand what, you know, it's pretty broad swath kinds of things, things that are happening nationally and statewide. But at the end of the day, what we're most concerned about, and the information that's hardest to get, I understand that, is the local situation. So, you know, what is the unemployment rate locally? And how does that, how's that looking now? And what do we expect that to be? That's going to have an impact on my willingness to support rate increases, for example. So I, to the extent that you can gather that information, it would be useful to help make these decisions. And then as far as the, just to make some smaller points, but on the expense-saving time, I mean, I think a lot of us, myself included, have been zooming like crazy these past couple of months and have learned how effective it really can be, even with folks, when you're meeting with folks who you don't regularly meet with, not just folks in your own office. And so it has really, I think, and changed the need for travel-related meetings, right? There's just, we're not doing it right now, and I think most people are realizing it in terms of the information exchange, it works reasonably well, if not the same, and in some cases, better than it does the in-person. And so I just want to emphasize that, and we really ought to be taking serious hard looks at our travel budget because that's a place where we can save a lot of money without impacting the quality of service that we provide the community. So, and that small business fund, I'm all for looking, I wasn't really all that supportive of making it available in the first place. I'd rather deploy that to folks in need right now. So if other commissioners are interested in hearing that or exploring that, I'm certainly in support of it. There, those are the end of my comments. I made them as fast as I could. We have just 25 seconds. Anybody have maybe just a show of hands, burning questions that they want, therefore want to open up more time for a second round? I am not seeing any interest in that. I'll just use the little bit of remaining time we have to check in with Frank. This session was about giving direction to you all. Do you feel like you got the direction? Or did you want to, you know, pose a question or two that folks can answer quickly to make sure that you do get that direction?
Thank you, President Mattel. This gives me enough to go on, and I think staff enough to go on to bring back the various formats and options as we go and enter into our financial planning part of the year. I would definitely agree with you that we're looking at a lot of different ways of how we operate. We're even looking at, you know, what's the role of an in-person lobby going forward when you start to think about the fact that space is money? How do we telecommute? How do we do some of these other things? So no rock unturned. We also, when we talk about financing, we're looking at lots of financing options, but the more you finance, the more you run into issues such as debt service coverage and some of these other things that then challenge your rates versus something like cash flows. And so I'm really pleased with how the, and I'll tell you one thing, we've already seen a 5%, roughly a 5% revenue decline that we can attribute to COVID-related changes. We've seen some other revenue challenges recently because we had a very warm January. Our second-largest customer, Willamette Industries, announced that they were going out of business. So they're going out of business effective of June, I think, if I remember right. So we're seeing a lot of challenges already, some of those associated with COVID. So we'll work on getting more data and we'll be work on definitely bringing forth options for the board to consider. But thanks for asking. I got enough direction that I can go with from here.
Okay. I know where I'm at is no rock unturned, and anything we can do to relieve rate pressure, I'm all for. I mean, that, well, you already knew that before asking the question, but that's where you're going to find me on those kinds of questions. All right, officially, we have scheduled a break right now. It's supposed to be 7:10, but it's not. It's only 6:37. I'll just take a quick poll of folks. We only, I'm just, before I do, we have one major item remaining, the Capital Improvement Plan. It's got a 30-minute clock on it, and then just correspondence and board wrap-up. So, you know, we have some 40 minutes, 40 to 50 minutes remaining in the meeting this evening. If folks would like a break, probably now is the better time to take it if they want to push on through. That is an option as well. So maybe just quick poll, those in favor of pushing on through? I can't see John Brown, but I could see everybody else. Those in favor of pushing on through? Those in favor of taking a quick break? I can't see John Brown, but it doesn't matter because I got three votes in support of taking a quick break. So we will do that. Given the way things are, no cheesecake once again, unless you got some in your fridge, why don't we just do a five-minute break? So according to my clock, it's 6:38. I will resume at 6:40, I can't add, 6:43. And you might want to turn off those, turn on those mute buttons. And you might want to turn off those, uh, turn on those mute buttons. All right, we will start up again. I can't see if Commissioner Carlson, I can't see Commissioner Carlson now. Is she here? Let's, there she is. All right. Yeah, I can, I can see four at a time, not all five. Frank, are you here?
I'm, I'm here, President Mattel.
All right. Well, at 6:43, we will, uh, get started again. Those breaks just aren't as fun if you don't have anybody to go talk to. You just sit here and twiddle your thumbs until it's time to get back to work, I guess. All right. Well, we have one major item remaining and that's the capital improvement plan assumptions and priorities with, uh, what says here, Frank Lawson and Rod Price, but I think Rod's going to drive.
Yes, sir. So a couple of things before I, I start the, the majority of it. One is, uh, kind of like Frank, I just wanted to let you know, this is a informational at a very high level. So Dick, if you were looking for a lot of numbers, you're only going to see a couple of numbers this whole time. So I really apologize. The second part of this though, is what I'm hoping to get out of it is, you know, uh, kind of Frank's point, what, uh, what kind of numbers, what do you want to see in, in July when we bring you the, uh, the final or the proposed, uh, uh, plans? And so, um, I think I've heard a lot of good direction tonight, um, as well. So anyway, that's, that's kind of, you'll just see a very high level overview in this, um, this presentation. The other thing I wanted to do real quick is give you a quick status of where we're at with the 2020 work. I think Steve, you mentioned that we were getting back to work. And so in electric, uh, we anticipate spending about 70 to 75% of our capital plan budgeted, uh, this year. And in water, we're, we're anticipating about 80%. The other thing I wanted to mention real quick is we are starting back ramping up customer work. During the executive order, uh, in, in some of the early stages of the lockdown, we had really decreased our, our, uh, outages to customers, uh, trying to avoid lengthy or, or outages with, with many people. But we're going to be hopefully by mid-June ramped back up to our, our normal pace to, to continue our work. So Travis, can you advance the next slide, please? So this slide's just going to, I want to talk a little bit about the, um, the planning that's going on with the, the capital plans. One of the things, uh, that several of you alluded to, uh, I believe we are getting better at, uh, creating our, our capital plans. There's a number of things that go into that. That's understanding how projects work better. We're taking more time upfront with our plans, uh, you know, the, that saying garbage in, garbage out kind of thing. And it's resulting in improved actual to budgets. If you look at the chart there, it basically, the graph is showing us we're, uh, hitting just about 100% of our, our budget, uh, in the last two years. And, and I have to admit and do large part to, to our friends in finance, but it's also, you know, combined effort with engineers and, and a lot of people involved in, in spending this kind of money, as you can imagine. But anyway, I think we're getting better at that kind of thing. The other part I want to point out is, again, going back to Commissioner Mattel's request three years ago sort of triggered something in me and Mel about, uh, hey, let's, let's work on this idea of, of a tie between, um, how does capital and O and M and reliability? How do those things all work together? Wasn't exactly how his commit, his question came out, but that's the end result that's happened. We've been able to do a couple of projects now, um, that are starting to take advantage of that thought process. In roughly, um, we were calling it roughly asset management. It takes a lot of work to get to, but, uh, we were just starting to ramp up some serious efforts in both the water and electric, uh, and standardizing around that. And then the, the COVID response hit. And so, uh, we'll still continue on that. But, uh, by and large, that's going to improve our capital planning, uh, in the future. So I just want to mention those two things. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about the, the water capital plan a little bit. Uh, I'm going to start with, um, its, uh, 10-year number is around 250 million. It's comprised of, uh, of, again, trying to go back to our compulsory risk and strategy based conversations. But, uh, some of the compulsory work that's in the plan, uh, that's proposed right now is College Hill. We, we don't have a choice. We need to redo that due to state. And then of course, customer, uh, related work, uh, connections and, and response and that kind of thing. Our strategic work is the, the second source, uh, that's still on track, we hope, uh, somewhere. Our emergency waters, um, stations, those are still in the plan, uh, and of course AMI. Risk-based, those are ones that we have some discretion over. We don't have to do them tomorrow. We can do them, uh, in the future. But these are all projects that pay off in the long run. Projects like, uh, working on our, our modernizing our controls, um, strengthening our resilient spine. There's, that's some transmission kind of related work. And then, uh, updating our, our reservoirs, um, the two other reservoirs beyond, uh, College Hill. One of the good things, uh, or whatever you want to call it, uh, one of the exciting things that Wally pointed out to me, uh, yesterday or a couple of days ago is that Hayden Bridge is no longer in the capital plan. We have by and large completed our work at Hayden Bridge over the last 10 years. It's a fantastic facility. I hope you guys get a chance to get up there and see it. It's just, uh, it's running like a champ. So, uh, next slide, please. So I wanted to touch on something real quick. The 10-year total I mentioned was 250 million. So if you, if you baseline to the, the one we proposed last year, that's up about $6 million. That, most of that $6 million, uh, of course is over the 10-year period, but, uh, it's based on improving our estimates of our projects, um, and around the reservoir and related transmission projects. So, uh, the other thing you'd probably notice if you looked at it is the five-year, the first five-year window jumped dramatically. That's because of the, the placeholders we put in for the second source, alternate water source, have started creeping into the five-year window. Next slide, please. What I would say is the major risks to our, our water capital plan. We have some uncertainty in, uh, around what kind of customer work will be coming down the pike. Again, Commissioner Mattel, you, you sort of hit it. What is the local economy going to do? We're, from the word on the streets is, uh, work is really picking up, but you know, I don't know. We don't know. That's an unknown. The second source, you know, exactly where is that going to go in and when's it going to go in? We've got some ideas. How much is it going to cost? Again, we get some ideas, but there's some uncertainty around that. Uh, I added source protection and climate here and not just because of John Brown, but, um, I do think that right now we don't spend a lot of money in the capital plan on that. But potentially, um, you know, depending on wildfires and how things unfold, there may be some impacts to our, our source protection programs and, and the things we do to deal with it. Emergent failures, of course, are always something that, um, you can't predict. If we get a stream of those, um, you know, that's, uh, it's just something that's always in there. Other thing I'll note too, and, and I'm going to note this in the, the electric as well, but, uh, I'm talking about staffing to complete the, the work. And, and I don't necessarily mean by numbers, but, um, it could be, do we have the right people doing the right things? And, and in the water department, for instance, uh, I did a big review. And, and one of the things that we, we pointed to as, as being a, a risk to further capital plans is we're, we don't have enough graphics in-house. And we've tried doing, um, external contracting and it hasn't worked. So we're, we're going to boost up the staffing there for, for instance, in, in our CAD department. So, um, it's more than just a total number at, well, though it's about what people do we have and do we have the right skill sets as much as anything else? So, next slide, please. Thank you. So turning our attention to the, the electric plan, um, the, the total tenure is 356 million for the proposed plan. One of the things I'll note about the proposed plan is I, is I asked our team to take what they were planning pre-COVID and work it through and then produce it. So this is sort of the result of that, just to let you know where it came from. But our compulsory work, uh, is basically the repair, uh, you know, the customer kind of work. One of the things we're doing, um, because you know, there's simply not enough money to, to program and plan and fix and replace everything is in, we're in sort of a run to failure mode in the, the electric. So we're trying to look at ideas about how to, uh, pre-stock more supplies and different things. But, um, compliance and PEC is, is a much bigger component of, of electric than it is in water. Strategic projects, AMI again, um, the resiliency and reconfiguration, especially on the upriver system. Modernization, automation, uh, there's a good way to, uh, offset some of the, uh, the failures in cables, for instance, by being able to do some automatic transferring, uh, and get some of our numbers down. Risk-based work, uh, that's working more on substations, uh, the, um, underground cable replacement plan we have. There'd be a good chunk of money we have put in there that will, um, extend our cable life or at the end of most of our cable lives now, but it would extend the cable life out to 50 years. Transmission, substation rebuilds, those kind of things. Substations are in tough shape. About 15% of our outage numbers from the last year and a half have come from substations. When you consider how few substations we have, um, and how much wire and all the other things we get exposed to, 15% is a huge chunk of that. So, next slide, please. Again, comparing, uh, this year's proposal to, to last year's, um, it's up $31 million. Improving the accuracy of our estimates, we revised a number of ways we've done things. Basically, it's a lot of the same stuff, but only I think more accurately projected. We are increasing focus on, I mentioned the cable, the asset management component. One of the things I would say about two-thirds of that increase falls in the outer years, not in the first five years. But basically, um, you know, modernization and pre-spending for, for emergent failures, uh, some of those things are all tied into our, our, um, totals here. Next slide, please. So major risks to our plan, um, again, unknown customer work. Electrification, I think, is a big one. You know, I, I see there's a, there's probably a secret storm brewing out there between legislation, need, um, economy, pricing, there's all these kind of things that could tumble together fairly quick to, to perhaps impact some, some upgrades in some areas. So we'll see. Somebody mentioned the Lieberg Canal, um, you know, there's a big question mark. We're going to talk more about that in two weeks. You know, it's, uh, there's no getting around it. Whatever we do, it's, it's going to be expensive. Springfield area system, uh, if you see that, that transformer being lifted to the, on that picture there, that's the, the replacement unit that failed, um, gosh, a couple of weeks ago for out at IP. And so, um, there's some thoughts and, and work and planning we need to do with that area to, uh, to reliably serve the, the customers out in that area. So increasing system age, um, Tyler, he likes to, he calls it the sleeping dragon. Tyler Nice, he's our, um, electric manager. Our system age keeps increasing, um, and, but we're keeping an eye on it. And, and again, that could lead to more emergent failures. And that, again, that's unpredictable depending where you're at on that, that reliability curve. And I mentioned the staffing, it's, it's also an issue in, in electric. Do we have the right people? Can we get the right people, the technical people? We've, we've struggled in some ways to, to get technical people in the, in the door here. Next slide, please. So I'm going to end, uh, this discussion, um, with the, how do we turn the dials down? And in general principles, what do we mean, um, by that and what are some impacts? In both, both utilities, it's the same, uh, answer roughly. And Commissioner Mattel, um, alluded to it, it's, we would defer projects. So you would likely, what we would do is defer some of the resiliency projects, like one of the reservoirs or a transmission main in water, uh, or a, a substation reconfiguration or something like that and push that out of the plan. That, that pushes a fairly large chunk of money out. That has its, uh, drawbacks as well in the long run, but, um, um, that, that's one of the, the tools. Another one is we, we reduce our, our, um, projects around the modernization and automation pieces. And it's, it's not like it's necessary, um, per se. It contributes in the long run to, to reliability, but, uh, that's a lesser tool, lesser impacts, lesser costs. So those are like within the year throttle kind of things. And then finally, uh, type one reductions, we have, you know, a number of, of programs and projects in our type one categories that, that we continue to try and really chase hard, you know, cross arms, for instance, or whatever it is, um, pipe replacements. You know, you want to try and keep ahead of those as much as possible, um, to keep ahead of the depreciation rate and the, the failure rates and all that. Nonetheless, you can, um, manipulate those for, uh, over, you know, short periods of time. So, um, they do come with more direct ties to, to staffing and, and reliability though. That's the overview. If you go to the next slide, I believe that's the question slide. And with that, I would take questions.
All righty. Well, thanks for the presentation. We have just 14 minutes or so remaining in the session. That's enough for a full rebound. As a reminder, I'll finish off. We have a minute remaining and again at 30 seconds. So don't just hand up. As a reminder, I'll put this up. We have a minute remaining and again at 30 seconds. So don't just hand up first.
Okay, was that going a bit, am I echoing? Okay, maybe not. I had a couple of questions. One, Rod, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the substation kind of degradation in cables. You said that there was a lot of work to be done then. Have we been not funding that? I mean, generally, when, when I think about our repair work and the depreciation and such, we have target levels. And, and ages that we look at on our finance, on the, you know, on, on our overall financial plan. And generally speaking, it seems like the age of the facilities and equipment has been kept in that target range, but if that's an average, you know, obviously some really big projects that are newer could be weighing that in a different way and our substations may be getting more neglected. If you can kind of talk to that a little bit more. And then my other question was, you said resiliency projects and you, you didn't list AMI. And I, I know that we had some projects that were kind of put off during COVID. I think AMI was one of them that was sort of put on hold because it was difficult for people to, you know, go and visit homes and, and have more contact. So I'm wondering if that one is still on hold or if that's just not a big enough impact that it wasn't listed on this kind of conversation. So. That's it. Thank you.
That's the great question. So the age of system we use right now, from a metric standpoint that we report on is an average. If we, we do have some breakdowns and finance has been working with us to, to break those down and do some predictions. So we were just starting that work within then when the, when the COVID sort of hit. So we'll get back to that. Long story short, though, if you have something basically like Carmen, while a lot of it's not in the books, for instance, it, it does tend to freshen the age. The thing is, we have roughly three quarters of a billion dollars in, in electric assets. And so it takes a lot to move the needle. And so if you have a, a substation with cables, the, the relative costs and so forth. It, you could spend a lot there, but really we haven't spent. If you look at our, the controls in the substation, they're all old and on their last legs. A lot of the breakers have been updated. But basically substations, I'd say about two thirds of them are, are beyond the, the, what I would consider normal life from, from an engineering standpoint. That doesn't mean they're, they're ready to blow up or anything, but the other question, so we have a way to break that down. I can send you some of that broken down from the agent system. So you can see the different categories. The other ones, AMI, we're back on track. We're starting deployment again. We're starting a number of, of upgrades to, to the computers, background. We've installed two poles or actually the second one's going to go in next week. So it's back on track.
Somebody else want to jump in the queue? Go ahead, John.
You can see me now?
Yeah, it's Frank that I don't see anymore.
Fair trade. Hey, um, thank you, Rod. Great presentation. Generally speaking, I don't want to run and defer maintenance items into the future. I think the people that are consuming the product today needs to pay for the wear and tear on the system. And I think it's, it's penny wise and pound foolish to kick the can down the road and let future generations have to pay for what, what we used and ran into the ground. So I'm, I'm not for really deferring the, the things that keep us running. But I do have a question on the wisdom of keeping AWS in, in the budget, in the capital budget. I noticed the rates and things when we don't even know if we can build that in Glenwood. We have such a major land use decisions that we have no idea of, maybe we should consider maybe moving that back down a little bit because it, it does have rate implications on the water side coming up in a few years, pretty significant ones. And so I guess just to voice my sentiment on that a little bit, that if we were looking for places to maybe push back a little, that would be the first place I'd push back. That's all I have.
Yeah, I mean, my quick comment on that is that if we, if we do, if we do move ahead with it, I, I think we want to have a placeholder for it. And right now, I, I think I understand the, the land use and all the things you're talking about. But it's, while I just talked about this the other day, we're, we're still in a really good position to, to make it happen.
It's good to hear.
We will, Mindy, you're next, and then we'll pick up Dick afterwards.
Okay, I just have a quick question about turning down the dial or maybe a question, comment and a question. So I generally don't support deferring the resiliency projects, given that that's one of our strategic priorities and also part of what will hopefully keep our costs down in the future because we won't have any kind of emergency costs come up. But I'm curious. When we do have to look at some of these choices, like when we get more specifics, if you could give us just some like basic, if we decided to defer certain projects, what would the, the risk and cost be in deferring those? I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think I think what we could do is, and that's why we're working to tie that reliability to the spending a little bit better and, and we're working on that. But we, we, I can definitely, in sort of big terms, we can do that. It's basically the, so if, basically if we defer this project X for a million dollars, what projected reliability impact might that have over 10 years or whatever it is? Okay, that, that we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dick.
Okay, I'd like to follow up on a comment that was made earlier about AWS. So my recollection is that we as a board in, in consultation with staff deferred AWS because we had questions, at least at that time, about the efficacy of the project, not overall, but just in relation to our sense of what would be most useful in an emergency. And that's why we kind of deferred to the, the wells and the water stations and the emergency supply. We had, we had questions about what we were going to build and where we were going to build it. And we had questions about the cost and the impact that would have on rates. You know, we really haven't had much discussion, other than just sort of observing the progress that we've made on the emergency water stations around the community. We've not really revisited those strategic conversations or gotten clarity about what and where or cost and impact on rates. So I don't feel as, although I agree that the project as intended is beginning to move within the windows that begin to need to be addressed and, and handled financially. We haven't done the work as far as I can tell. As a board and, you know, in consultation with staff to resolve some of the issues and questions that we had around all that. Maybe that's just a way of restating what Commissioner Brown said, but I think we have some work to do before that starts to really take traction. The other quick comment I wanted to make is that, you know, from my perspective as a board, we don't really involve ourselves much in the specifics of what goes into the capital plan. That's staff's purview. We have to rely on your expert judgment, the engineering staff and, and the technical staff. We're not going to second guess that. We get involved in discussions around some of the larger strategic projects like Carmen Smith and AWI and AMI and AWS, but generally you're the ones who draw up the financial plan. If you need more or less money, then I, I, I think we do have a major role in setting the, the budget or the amount of money that you have to work with that comes from rates and from bonds. We do that through the budget and the financial planning process. You know, if, if, if we need to, if, if we need to change the level of funding, either up or down, we probably need to do that on your recommendation or with your advocacy as opposed to just, well, you know, on the one hand this and on the other hand, this and there's some risk and, you know, we're not really in a position to process that unless it's queued up as specific questions around specific issues. So the other quick comment was just that I have as much interest, it's not just a matter of did we spend the money every year that we intended? You know, I, I'm also interested in looking back and saying, did we get the work done that we had put in play and, and did we get the results out of that work that we intended? And I'm still not seeing from a process standpoint where in our elements of managing all of this that we really addressed those last two questions. But I appreciate the process and the point in the year that we're in and, and I'm ready to engage you in any of the particulars around that.
Yeah, I think a couple of things I'll, I'll just say real quick. We can, I think it's probably time we, we can either do a background or, or something. I'll talk to Frank. What he thinks is the best plan to do an AWS update. John alluded to the land piece, but there's a little more to it than that. The rates piece. Yeah, I can't remember what the comment, but I, I guess the last thing I would say though is we, I'll, I'll think about how the reporting piece on the did we do what we said we were going to do, not just did we get the total? I, I think we're getting better at that. In fact, I know we are, but I'll, we'll get a way to talk about that and maybe even put it in the quarterly report. So it becomes a little more obvious. Thank you. Good comment.
All right, we have two and a half minutes or so remaining on the clock. So think about if you have a round two questions, I'll jump in while you're all doing that. So I, I'll also jump on the AWS bandwagon. I'm basically right where Dick Helgeson is in that I, you know, I recall all of the conversations. I was there when we halted the, the first effort to put something out there on the Willamette and substituted some of the smaller projects and some of that thinking. And then, well, anyways, he articulated really well. I feel like there are still ongoing conversations with sub and we're trying to determine the level of cooperation we might get to do something jointly that would save us and them some money. So while I understand that we want to have a placeholder in the capital budget for this project, should we decide to proceed? As far as I recall, we have not yet actually decided to proceed. And, and delaying that a year or two, if, if that's when it comes to it, or who knows, we might decide, we might have to just delay longer because of technical, legal or land issues, that kind of thing. So I, I just want to bookmark that as well. The AWS in my mind is, is very much an open question. I, you know, I think Dick also made a really good point about us not second guessing too much, you know, what goes into the capital plan, although I probably pushed back on that a little bit. I think there is a role for the board to play in that there, you know, there could be scenarios and should be in my mind, scenarios brought to the board that say, well, there's a, you know, a capital plan that looks like this and costs this much. And, you know, you, and you'll get this kind of resiliency or out of it or safety and reliability, or this one really pushes the needle in this kind of way. And here's one at the other end of the spectrum and somewhere in between. And we ought to have a chance to weigh in, in, in those kinds of ways, it seems to, to me. So, but I agree. It's, it's a team effort and we need to rely on your expertise and trust that judgment. So, but I, I think, like I said, there is a role for the scenario playing. And, you know, when I think about all of these things, it's my final comment really is a, you know, wow, I, I want that resiliency. I want that safety. I want that reliability and I want those low rates. And so I guess you get to pick two or three and not all four at the same time. Where I guess I would want to, you know, you know, look for some relief, I suppose, is potentially in moving things that might be movable out of, into a financing position so that we can spread that cost. And I know there may be some projects that don't quite fit that today, but could fit that with some modification and could then be financed over a longer period of time, or at least I'm hopeful of that. So those, those are my comments. I can see that my time is just run out. I'll just ask real quickly if there are any second round questions out there, just show of hands. Hi, Sony showed me, by the way, how to scroll this thing. So now I know how to look up and down and see, nobody's raising their hand. All right. Well, in that case, we will close out that. I, well, actually, once again, I think it's useful to give Rod and/or Frank an opportunity to weigh in at the end and make sure that they got the direction and feedback that they need. And if not, please ask a pointed question so you can get it.
I, yeah, I found out a lot of things that I think we can follow up on and so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, Frank, anything you want?
Oh, I was just going to say, thanks for the feedback. I think, I think there's always an opportunity to look at the combination of sort of the large lumps in the oatmeal, as I would describe them. There's, there's some projects like an AMI, an AWS, a Carmen Smith, where you can kind of encapsulate and segregate the project and look at its reliability. And then there's other parts of the system that we have to take more of a statistical look at, you know, how many feet of cable or length of pipe of certain ages. And so it's a combination of macro and micro that we deal with and, and we appreciate your feedback and guidance and, and the level of detail that we bring to you for help with will be both really based on sort of the size and the impact and the, the strategic relevance of those decisions. And so expect to see more of that. Knowing that there are always trade-offs between spending rates, as you point out, President Mattel, between rates and risk and investment. And so we look forward to navigating through that with the board.
All righty, I see that there are still 38 attendees. I'm impressed. Chris Jones, we're almost done. Deborah, don't fall asleep on us. We're almost finished here. Let's bring it home. All right, item number 10, correspondence and board agendas. Frank, that's you.
Thank you, President Mattel, commissioners. Appreciate all your feedback this evening. There was only one item of correspondence. This was a state mandated report to you, the board. We also filed this report with the Department of Energy and that has to do with our 2019 renewable portfolio standard report and compliance. And so if there were any, we, we answered a few questions prior to the meeting about this. I didn't know if there were any additional ones. This, we, we were compliant in 2019, although we did have a small compliance obligation because of some lower levels of EWEB hydro output. But any questions for me or for staff on the RPS report?
We have one from Dick. Go ahead.
You can hit this in our one-on-one, Frank, but I just, I noticed that there was a step up in that obligation some 10 years out or thereabouts. I think going from 15 to 20% for utilities in our category. And I just, I know that in the near to intermediate term, we weren't having any issues with our obligation because we had enough renewable energy credits to retire in order to meet that obligation. And some exemptions for our hydro. But I just wondered in the longer run, you know, did we see any problems with meeting that obligation when that steps up? And again, you don't have to try to answer that here, but I'd kind of be interested in knowing whether that's a future issue for us.
Yeah, I can shed a little bit on, a light on that, Commissioner Helgeson. There is a step up in 2020. I believe there's also one in 2025. And so it goes to, if I recall, 25% in 2025, 20% in 2020. Those, those numbers are at the top of my head, but I somehow remember the 25 and 25 number. And knowing that there is a step up in 2020. Under normal modeling, we do model that. We see under present load conditions and with legacy hydro, we're still in pretty good shape. At least over the next five years through that 2025. But like happened this year, we had some lower production with a legacy hydro, which put a slight obligation onto the utility. We still have quite a bank of wrecks, for example. So we, we don't foresee an issue, but I can elaborate further with some more details with our, in our individual discussion.
Thank you.
The other sorry, other questions about RPS? Well, all right then, we will move on to. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say the, the next, the part of this was upcoming agendas. We, we, in two weeks from today, we do have a work session. There's no action planned, but our topics of discussion center around the McKenzie, specifically status update on the Lieberg Canal and potentially setting up specifically, status update on the Lieberg Canal, and potentially setting up some future decisions on that. And so Lieberg and Walterville, and then also a presentation to the board on a cost analysis to serve our upriver customers, a cost of service analysis, which was requested by the board. Again, no action, just a discussion. And so that's in two weeks. And then really, the July 7th meeting is to kick off our financial planning. You've got a little bit of background tonight as to some of the differences this year versus past years, and in particular, some of those driven by economic conditions, some of them driven by our own decisions. And so that really kicks off in July. And then August, kind of the highlight of that will be the first release to the board of our electrification study results. And so I know people are anticipating that, and as we are having that discussion with the board to discuss those preliminary results. So those are kind of the highlights coming up over the next two months or so.
All righty, well, thank you, Frank. One last item remaining, and that's the board wrap up. We will take it right down the line, the same way we did at the beginning of the meeting. So Commissioner Schlossberg, you are first.
Just want to give another thank you to Travis for a smooth virtual meeting.
All right. Travis, you're a smooth operator. Commissioner Carlson.
I don't have anything. Thanks, everyone. Good to see you all.
Dick?
First of all, you're all too young to remember this, unless you watch a lot of late night TV, but there's this episode of The Lucy Show that I was reminded of, and always reminded of in the capital discussion that one in the cookie factory where she and Ethel are trying to keep the cookies on the conveyor belt. If any of you remember that, I'm kind of reminded that when we, when we engage our discussion about capital. I also wanted to say, just generally, in terms of managing our way forward, particularly in light of the risks and perils of the COVID epidemic and impacts on our financial trajectory, we've really worked long and hard during my tenure on this board to right the ship, and staff has done yeoman's work in terms of bringing financial stability and flexibility back to the utility that affords the board options and an ability to commit to our customers what our rates are going to look like over time, and to manage within that. And I just would hope that we don't do things in the next while, in the near term, in response to that, that undermine some of what we've accomplished there, because I think that all stands us in good stead going forward. And as much as anything that's been done during my tenure on the board will serve as legacy in terms of contribution over the past while. So I just hope, as we need to make trade off decisions there, that we, that we try to maintain the integrity of what we've accomplished over the last while, because that was done with some sacrifice and some difficulty. But I think we're in good shape to do that, so it's just my concern that we not trade that off. Thank you. Good meeting tonight.
Thanks, Dick. John Brown, you're next, and I'll go out last.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things, just a question, Frank, that, I want to make sure that we were doing the public outreach for College Hill and neighbors and things, and with the COVID thing and the inability to communicate, I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that that group of people that are going to be affected by that project are still in the queue, because I think the project can't be delayed. And so I'm assuming that somehow we're going to be able to communicate with them. And then the other thing, just for others, I shared this with Steve, but others, I've been up on the McKenzie a bit lately, and the water content in the snowpack, it's 35% of normal. It's absolutely abysmal what we've got coming up for us with the drought. And so I just hope the health of that river stays, that we're on that, because if that snowpack and the water flows decline, temperatures warm up, algae and moss, and it's just not good for the health of the river. So I just hope that in our stewardship, that we do everything we can to make sure that river stays healthy. That's it.
Frank, you care to, you need to respond, or?
No, I will, I will take Commissioner Brown's comments regarding communications and make sure we are addressing that. I know we're reaching out continually to that group. They're definitely not off the radar as well as the 40th Avenue site as well. So both of those kind of work in tandem, but your point is absolutely understood, and I'll make sure that that message gets passed on.
All righty, well, I guess it's, I get the final word, I do believe. I don't have any substantive things to say, but I'm just looking down the list of participants, the 34 who are remaining, and Travis, and Renee, and Julie, I'm just looking down the list here, Adam Ru, Susan Ackerman, Lena Kostopoulos. I'm not going to go all the way down the list, there's a whole bunch of folks down here. Thank you so much for participating. It is hard to sit through a two or three hour Zoom meeting, even when you do get to talk, and that much harder when you don't. So I appreciate the efforts you all made to stay up to date and, you know, participate virtually from afar. And with that, I will close out the meeting. iPhone, I guess 101 uses. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm hitting the button.